And everyone should be in now.
Oh, okay, I can't see that. Good evening, good evening, everyone. I'm calling this public meeting to order at 6:11. Apologies for our late start. We're having some technical difficulties and we may have ongoing technical difficulties, but we're going to do our best and if we, yeah, we'll, we'll keep you posted if we need to make any changes on what we're doing. So in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing at 6:00 PM on May 21st, 2025, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 101, 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. For the record, I am Ann Herbst, Chair of the Conservation Commission for this evening. Will the rest of the commissioners and staff please identify themselves?
Eleanor Itamarri with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Vivian De La Paz with the Environment Department.
Commissioners?
John Sullivan.
Steve Estes-Margiassi.
Amy Linay.
Monet T. England.
Okay, thank you. So the first item on the agenda tonight is a notice of intent, DEP File Number 006-2031 and Boston File Number 2025-009 from Fodera Engineering on behalf of 250 Bremen LLC for the proposed construction of a multi-use building with eight residential units and one ground floor commercial space at 250 Bremen Street, East Boston, Mass. The resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. And who's here for the applicant?
Tom Schultz from Goddard Consulting is presenting for Fodera Engineering and also the applicant, 250 Berman LLC.
Okay, go right ahead. Thank you.
We have a brief presentation that we're going to show with everybody. So this is 250 Berman Street. The applicant is 250 Berman LLC and it is DEP File Number 006-2031. There was no comments on the DEP File Number lookup, but there was also no number. So I don't know currently if there is any. There may be. If the, if the Conservation Commission has any, has seen those comments and they would like to forward them to the applicant, that would be great. But let's just move forward to the next slide. So we'll just quickly have a brief presentation showing existing conditions, our proposed conditions, and then we'll follow up with any questions or discussion that the commission may have after our presentation. So next, so our current site is 250 Berman Street. It is 4,000 square feet and it is mostly parking lot for the surrounding residential buildings and people on the street. It is heavily disturbed, mostly parking lot with some small vegetated buffers along the edges there, which is lawn. It's bordered by residential properties, two, three family residential buildings on the north and the south side. And then across Berman Street is the Berman Street Park. This, uh, this lot is in the FEMA flood zone, which is spurring the land subject to coastal storm flowage resource area, which is shown in the blue there. So it is a lot of the top portion of the lot itself and then running down adjacent to the northwestern property boundary out towards Berman Street. The flood elevation on site is 10 and under the, uh, Boston, the, the Boston flood elevation of 16.46. Additionally, onsite, there's no stormwater mitigation, no drain hole, no man. So stormwater onsite during flood conditions is allowed to travel anywhere overland. Additionally, nobody has seen floodwaters on the site, but it is at that elevation. The applicant is proposing the construction of a mixed-use building. It's going to be eight residential units with one ground floor, with one ground floor commercial space. The majority of the lot is going to be the building itself and there's going to be two walkways adjacent to each side of the building itself. There's going to be a stormwater infiltration system consisting of eight Coltech 180 chambers and then overflow from any of the stormwater infiltration system will be directed into the Berman Street sewer main down to the south of the lot itself. Additionally, as we'll talk about in the next slide, there's also some compensatory flood storage in the north of the site itself as a result of filling of the land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, next slide. So the project is going to deplace approximately 230 cubic feet of land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, we're going to be doing a flood storage basin to the north of it. It's shown in green up there and that's going to replace approximately 240 cubic square feet of flood storage onsite. So we're going to gaining a little bit of flood storage. We're not going to be displacing any additional flood, flood waters to either side of the building itself and the site is going to maintain flood control and storm damage prevention. Next slide. That'll just conclude our brief presentation. If the commission has any questions or follow-up, now would be the time to ask them. We will be respectfully requesting an order of conditions from the commission tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do see, I believe we have a DEP file number now. Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
Well, yes. So there are no technical comments that are listed in the portal. However, um, DEP had noted that they were waiting on a filing fee. I'm not sure if that has been resolved or if the state filing fee has been submitted. I think my understanding is that usually DEP doesn't issue a file number until they've received the filing fee. But that's all I can see in their portal. We just wanted to flag that we had conducted a site visit and we would recommend including the special conditions of considering the use of a light colored roof material to reflect sunlight and allow for more energy efficiency in the building since there isn't too much space to do much with the landscaping or add trees. We would also recommend having, uh, that prior to construction, the applicant should provide us with the operations and maintenance plan for the pervious pavers that are being considered in the back as well as, um, a finalized plan for what is going to be done in the, uh, the small strip behind the building. Uh, I also wanted to flag for the commission that there were exploratory borings done a few years ago on this site, which weren't permitted. They, uh, the site is interesting because the FEMA floodplain actually had indicated that only a, um, a small corner of the project site or excuse me, of the, the parcel is within the floodplain. But when a survey was done, uh, it turned out that based on the elevations, about half of the parcel is actually in the floodplain. So those borings weren't permitted by the commission. And likely because of this issue with the, uh, with the map not necessarily representing, uh, the current conditions onsite. So, um, just wanted to flag those for the commission and other than that, uh, the standards set of conditions should be ready to go and those are in the dry folder.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before I go to commissioners, I'll just say, as a reminder to members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself and send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I was pointed out by Gail Miller, it's Bremen Street, not Berman Street.
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, I know. I'm just doing that for the record. That's all. Not a big deal. You, you have showed several vehicles parked there and those are probably vehicles for the adjoining properties?
Correct. Currently being used as a residential parking space for the adjacent property.
Right. And the existing, um, facilities, that kind of have any parking onsite for the people, the three family? Are they out in the street also?
I believe they're on the street as well because there's no basement proposed in this act, in this building.
Yeah. Okay. See, um, and is that, you're holding one inch of rain in those Coltechs?
I would defer to the engineer on that who is on the call tonight.
My name is Giovanni Fodera. I'm, I am on the call. So I'm taking the call from a, a car ride right now due to family matters. But yes, I can confirm that there's one inch of rainfall that's being contained within the stormwater system to meet the Boston Water Sewers, um, rules and regs. So yes.
Yep. And, um, there's, is there any place in the site at all to do any kind of, uh, trees or any type of other green infrastructure besides the infiltration requirement?
Well, we have, we have the rear of the property that we're using as part of the compensatory flood volume. Um, and with that being implemented, it's going right, right up against the building. And, um, so between the building and the property line in the back, there's about 10 feet. That flood storage basin is taking about, I want to say approximately six feet or so, plus or minus. So we're left with about from the top of the flood basin to the back property line, we're left with maybe plus or minus four feet. So that leaves us with little room to add, um, you know, additional stormwater mitigation items onsite. And other than that, we have the sides of the property, which are just, you know, five to six foot alleyways.
Yep. Is there any way that flood compensatory storage that you're proposing could be put under the building since you don't have a basement? Freeing up the back lot to be, um, one or two trees?
So due to flood compensatory, uh, you know, flood volumes, we need to have it open to the land so that it doesn't get contained. And so it's kind of acting as a natural flowage throughout the site and just the, uh, you know, adjacent property. So we cannot contain them, uh, anyway. We can however contain, obviously, as you know, the stormwater mitigation items.
All right. That's all I had.
Commissioner Linay?
Yes, I did notice in the NOI, um, it didn't check the need to go to Parks Commission. But as you mentioned, it's across the street from a park. So that does trigger that, um, that review. At least, at the very least, an administrative review, um, from Parks Commission. And then I also, I was reading the description of, I think, the ADA unit in the building, being at, it was 18.5. And I, I know there was some language describing that the measures taken to, you know, prevent water from, um, entering that unit. But can you talk a little bit more about that?
So I, I know the ADA unit is, so it's two feet above the existing, um, you know, flood and elevation of about 16.5, uh, to make it easier. So we want to stay two feet above, um, to meet, you know, uh, the, this performance standards. But is there any particular question that you want clarified regarding the ADA unit and the elevation to it?
Interested in, there was, I think, a description of, um, additional, you know, building materials being utilized to essentially waterproof that unit. And that's what I was curious to hear, hear you talk about more.
Okay. Um, yeah, I know that if we, if you look at the architectural details, the, it calls out the material that's being called out for, um, you know, the siding and whatnot. So I don't have the plans in front of me. Like I said, I'm in, uh, the car for a family matter. So, but I know I, in the notice of intent, in the description, there is the description of the materials that's being used.
I have the notice of intent in front of me. I'm reading what that ADA unit is going to be made up of. We're looking at a insulation of continuous weather resistant barriers, one inch of exterior grade OSB sheathing, 12 inches of a high protective flashing detail. And all of those are going to promote durability and limiting moisture into those units during potential flood events.
My question I guess would be if that, if that's the extent required to prevent flooding in that unit, is it not worth considering like another, um, strategy for bringing that unit up such as like a lift or a ramp? Just so it's, um, sort of on equal terms with the other units? That would just be my, my comment or suggestion. And then I think on the, the flood storage in the rear yard, I do, I do wonder a little bit more about that too. In terms of, you know, I guess aesthetically, it's really just essentially, um, crushed stone. Is that, and filter fabric? I guess, is there a way to, to create something a little bit, I don't know, more aesthetically pleasing there? Um, or, or like John, Commissioner Sullivan suggested, some, some plantings. I know there's not a lot of space, but, um, I think it's very utilitarian, I guess, back there. So, um, those are just my comments. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Herbst. Sounds like some of my, my questions have been asked, but I'm just curious to follow up on a couple of things. If the, there's no way to plant trees on the space, you know, just considering the fact that the community in the neighborhood is highly vulnerable to climate and anything we can do by way of increasing the natural green infrastructure type immunity of the neighborhood, that would be welcome for anybody developing here. I would say if you can't do the trees in the back or the side or, then consider a couple of other options. One, the rooftop itself. The lighter color rooftop has been suggested and that is a good thing for people who live there. With the increasing, um, temperatures, we certainly expect urban heat to increase as well. So the lighter color will help with reflecting that. Going beyond that, having some plants and planning so that the roof can hold some dwarf trees or something like that would be a good thing to do and accordingly, you know, manage the drainage as well. So that's one. Um, is there any? Do you have any response to that?
We'll certainly look into the idea of planting, but I do agree that the lighter color roof would be a good special condition to add to the, to the order of conditions if this does end up being approved. But we can certainly look into plantings in that area. I think as we talked about before, that it's just going to be a small space back there. So putting a large scale tree close to that basin might not be a good idea because as it grows, the roots are going to start infiltrating into that riprap and all the, the fabric as well.
And Commissioner, this, um, if I may add, this is Lior on behalf of 250 Bremen LLC. We, I, I have had extensive conversations during the design process with the architect about this. As Tom and Giovanni mentioned, I mean, it is an incredibly tight space in the back. We have put, we have talked about putting general plantings. Uh, I do think the tree is going to be really tight, especially when you add in the compensatory flood storage. Uh, but we have talked about plantings. We want to make that space look, you know, as nice aesthetically pleasing as possible, as Commissioner Linay has mentioned. So that has been in discussion. Um, so, you know, if it's a matter of plantings, that's already, that, that is already in motion with, uh, the architect and design team. And, and just one other comment too with Commissioner Linay. This was already approved by the Park Commission. So this did go through their review and this is all set with them. So.
Great. Thanks for that.
Thank you. On, um, so it's one thing to have planters and aesthetics, definitely. Thanks for paying attention to that. I think we're at a point with climate change where we need to go a little bit beyond that. And to thinking and figuring out what can be, I mean, the space is less because we're building everywhere, right? And if we could leave more space if we wanted. And when we don't leave space, then there is no space. So that's why the, my request was to consider that you, uh, maybe consider dwarf trees for the roof where there will be space. Another alternative is to consider planting trees elsewhere in the community. And it'd be good to get involved, figure out who is doing that kind of work and then help and support in that work and plant trees maybe on the street somewhere else. But wherever the trees are planted, they're going to be helpful for everybody. Other than that, I think this looks good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Estes-Margiassi?
I have nothing additional. I had similar questions on the ADA unit. They're, they're still open.
Okay. I, I, I have a question. If you could just clarify the need for the compensatory storage in land subject to coastal storm flowage. I, I think my understanding of land subject to coastal storm flowage is that you don't have to provide it because it's the ocean and you can't really account for that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the, the, the reason it was put there is so that water isn't spreading to the adjacent properties. It's captured in that one section and it's not kind of pushed out to the other adjacent residential units.
I'm, I'm sure they'd appreciate that. And maybe I'd be interested in Commissioner Sullivan's perspective if he's willing, because I know you're infiltrating into a Coltech system. So, um, Commissioner Sullivan, do you have thoughts on whether both should be there or needed or?
I, I do have thoughts. I don't, I'm not sure why they would try to capture, uh, the ocean or their little piece of the ocean. And when, once that's up and around, the, the neighbors are going to get what they're going to get anyway. So that, that doesn't matter at all. The one inch is for the smaller storms. After the first inch of rain, when the storm is up there and the coastal is coming in on you and flooding you, you've got a lot more problems than one inch of rain. So that's taken the first 90% of all the storms we deal with, they're doing the right thing. And after that, all bets are off for the entire city. So I don't think it's needed. I think they could be doing other good things for, you know, such as planting trees. Removing lower groundwater, et cetera. Um, when the flood comes, the flood comes. So I, I agree with you, Chair, that, that I don't think it, because it's coastal, you don't need to have compensatory flood storage.
Okay. Um, well, I wonder if, if we, I, I'm inclined to think we might want the applicant to go back and take a look at that, um, and to some different handling of that backyard area to, to see whether that can be greened up. And even, even if it's, you know, you want to make it slightly lower, but it's, but I think, I think I'm hearing from the commission that they'd, they'd like to see the greenery. What is your perspective on that from the applicant?
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you for that feedback, everyone. Um, I, again, I think, uh, and again, Giovanni's on this call. So I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the engineer. My, my understanding of that, that this was kind of a solution that came from, uh, you know, mutual conversation with the department. Um, and that's kind of how that idea came together, um, after quite a bit of thorough conversation back and forth. I'm like, obviously the, the greenery here is obviously a theme that I'm hearing from everyone and I'm obviously happy to work with that. You know, I, I think, I think I like the idea, what one of you suggested. I'm happy to have it as a condition where I plant other trees. I think realistically, just given the size and the tightness of that lot, even without that flood storage in there, I mean, I'm there almost every day and I can just tell you it's, it's a really tight lot. As I'm sure you know, in East Boston, that these lots are really small. I mean, again, I'm happy to do as you guys, um, request. I mean, I, I, I'm not here, you know, I'm here to kind of follow the advice of you guys. But I'm happy, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to plant trees in other places. If you feel that that's a better overall net community benefit. So if that's a condition that needs to come with it, I'm happy to oblige. I just, you know, I think going back to the flood stor, the compensatory flood storage, I think it would just unwind a lot of conversation that was already had. So that would be my only thought slash concern. But again, I'm happy to hear your thoughts about that.
Are, are you talking about conversations with neighbors with the, when, when you say the department, what are you referring to?
Uh, the, a lot of the initial threads, um, that we've had between, uh, with Elena and DeeDee and everyone else from the Environmental Department. So that, that's kind of, that's, that's where that, where these ideas kind of stem from, um, from these conversations and a lot of back, you know, kind of a lot of, uh, uh, back and forth over the last several months. So again, ha- happy to revise them as needed, but, um, you know, I, I just, like I said, I'm, if, if this, if the better solution is to do, is to plant in the neighborhood and that's a better net benefit for everyone, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Uh, Chair Herbst, if I, if I may, um, Lior, apologies. I, um, so yeah, compensatory flood storage is required in bordering land subject to flooding, but not, uh, LSCSF. So I, I apologize if, if that was, um, if potentially our feedback was misinterpreted. I think that, you know, we certainly weren't opposed to having that in the back, but I think that, yeah, we, uh, I know that we were going back and forth and just ensuring that the project, um, meets all the performance standards for LSCSF. So maybe that's where that came up.
Okay, um, it, any feedback from commissioners about what direction they would propose at this point?
You heard mine.
Go, let go of the storage and, and, and do plantings there?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, that is my inclination as well. I, do we have any comments from, uh, the public? Eleanor?
Apologies, I made it myself. Uh, we had, I just, oh, uh, Gail Miller, has her head raised?
Um, listening to this, um, new project, I, I would like to suggest that, um, certainly if the size is too, too small of a lot, that we have a nonprofit organization in East Boston, Tree Easty, which I'm sure you're all aware. I would like to see the developer propose something like, um, a donate, donation or an amount of money to be able to plant 100 trees in the community, you know, around the, around the whole neighborhoods. So that would be my suggestion. That would be, um, you know, a great boon to the, um, environment in East Boston. It's sorely lacking trees still. That's all. Thank you.
Well, that, uh, so that's a suggestion of 100 trees.
And Chair Herbst, uh, apologies again. Uh, my thought on that is that if the commission wants to pursue, um, a condition requiring tree plantings, I think we could maybe specify where, like which neighborhood the trees are being planted in, but I don't know that we would be able to specify either donations or, um, which organization to work with.
Okay. I, I think I would like to suggest, uh, that we hold this, uh, proposal for, to our next meeting to, to, to provide an opportunity to, to work out some of these, whether there is, I, I recall from another time that there was an issue about how you could, arranging the tree thing is not totally simple. Is that what you're saying, Eleanor?
I think, yeah, I think we can potentially, uh, I think in the past, projects have had conditions attached to them that require, um, planting trees and we can limit that to, you know, geographically, like saying that they need to be in East Boston. I just don't know that we can actually specify which organization that goes through.
Okay. I guess I'd suggest that we continue this, uh, till our next meeting to either have some combination of backyard vegetation or, or tree, uh, donation, uh, to work with the applicant on that.
So moved. Second.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes-Margiassi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Um, thank you for your time. We'll, we'll be back with you, uh, next session for this.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is a notice of intent for DEP File Number, uh, 006-2035 from Fort Point Associates, Inc., on behalf of Gate Residential Properties LLC for the proposed construction of 106 foot long, 10 foot wide, multi-use path from Fort Point Associates, Inc., on behalf of Gate Residential Properties LLC for the proposed construction of 106 foot long, 10 foot wide multi-use path with associated border lighting and irrigation between Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen Welch Greenway and adjacent properties at 355 Bennington Street and 401 Bremen Street in East Boston. The resource areas land subject to coastal storm stor- flowage. Who's here for the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Katie Moniz and I'm a permitting consultant with Fort Point Associates. I'm joined here today by the proponent, Liz Bayo of Redgate, uh, as well as my colleague, Natty King. Next slide, please. We're very excited to be here today. Uh, as many commissioners may know, uh, our colleagues at Gate Residential, uh, which are, is affiliated with Redgate, um, is the proponent at the adjacent 355 Bennington project, uh, which we are happy to say is under construction today and you can see it, uh, in, in the background here of your image. We are very excited that this particular offsite benefit can really connect Day Square to the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway in a way today that is prohibited. Making those connections is truly important so that people find the Greenway to be more permeable and that they can make connections to the transit networks and the plan East Boston improvements that Day Square will realize. Natty's going to talk us through briefly here, the scope of our project.
Next slide, please. Well, thank you, Katie, uh, picking up where she left off. Um, so as part of this public benefit associated with the 355 Bennington redevelopment, the proponents proposing a 10 foot wide, 100 linear foot long multi-use pathway. This new amenity will provide a connection between the destinations of Day Square and the open space of the Mary Ellen Greenway, Mary Ellen Welch Greenway and parks along its extent. As part of the pathway construction, the pathway itself will be asphalt, but along its edge will be a permeable pavement border underlined with a gravel bed to help capture and manage stormwater runoff. Uh, and then within the work area, we're also proposing to plant four new trees. This will provide a net gain of tree canopy and offset the removal of three small trees located in the proposed pathways extent. Um, and as part of this work, uh, this is on property owned by Massport and Mast dot, but we've had a productive relationship with them on working on submitting this application and getting this project underway on behalf of the applicant. Next slide, please. So existing site conditions on the left, you can see, uh, an aerial of our site. It's directly next to, uh, Route 1A where it enters an overpass over the Coughlin Bypass Road. And it's currently in a location that, as you can see in the top middle photo on the screen, uh, that's fenced off. So providing a barrier between the community and the Greenway and resulting in area and, uh, users of the pathway having to travel around either to the north or south to make that connection. The work area is turf lawn and then surrounding that is the existing pathway. Some drainage structures and the transportation infrastructure of Route 1A and the Massport Bypass Road. Next slide, please. So proposed conditions, uh, the top image is our layout and material site plan. So just starting plan north. Um, at the, uh, at the limit of the work area and the property line with 355 Bennington Street will be a gate to provide, uh, the same sort of access control present in other areas of the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway consistent with uh, Massport's management of the area. The pathway itself, it will be asphalt. It will travel planned south and then planned west to make that connection to the existing pathway. Um, and on the plan north edge of the pathway is that permeable pavement border. Adjacent to that is a new electrical conduit to support a new lighting fixture to help, uh, light up the site at night to provide safety. Uh, and then those four trees you can see kind of in dark, in black line work are those proposed new trees that will be planted as part of the project. In the cross section on the bottom of the screen, that shows the pathway in section view. So as you can see, the grade of the pathway will be pitched towards the permeable pavement borders that will provide an opportunity for onsite stormwater infiltration. Next slide, please. So resource areas, we are, uh, entirely within the land subject to coastal storm flowage resource area. That's the FEMA flood plain at elevation 10 NAVD 88. Our work area includes about 1,100 square feet of per- permanent impacts, including a minor amount of fill required to make the pathway appropriately graded for accessibility for all users. Addition, in addition to our permanent impacts that are, uh, related to the pathway construction are about 6,000 square feet of temporary impacts. And that's for the staging, uh, landscaping along the edge of the pathways and other, uh, minor activities associated with the proposed work. So the work will include removing the existing, uh, surface coverage at the site, excavating and installing the pathway bedding material, paving for the pathway, installing the electrical conduit for the new light fixture and irrigation to support the plantings around its edge, uh, and then finally regrading, installing new landscaping and resetting the fence way around the pathway perimeter. This fencing will essentially allow for, uh, a delineation between the adjacent Massport Bypass Road uh, and the pedestrians and cyclists that use the pathway to make sure those two user groups don't conflict. Um, and aside from that, no other resource areas or buffer zones are within our proposed limit of work. Next slide, please. So I'll pass it back off to Katie to wrap up the presentation with stormwater and construction period mitigation.
Thanks so much, Natty. Um, Natty did a great job detailing for you how the project really does seek here to not just create a public benefit, but also to promote stormwater infiltration. As we reestablish this area, uh, we anticipate that the use of this property over time, uh, will be governed by Massport, who is the operator of the Greenway today, but that the proponent will be responsible for all of the associated operation maintenance and good care of the surfaces we have created. So, um, I know it's, it's incredibly important to the commission that the improvements that are made for the public are, are kept in good repair. And we will certainly provide to you our arrangement with the, uh, agencies of Massport and Mast DOT. Uh, we will also create this as a work area that's protected by the appropriate erosion controls, including straw waddles and a silt sack for the catch basin, which is really more of an area drain that you can see at the center of your screen that exists in the long today. Uh, there are a small amount of area drain network within the Greenway today to alleviate any isolated flooding uh, between the Greenway and adjacent properties. And with that, uh, we would love to take your questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Elena, what do you have for us?
Yes, thank you. So we had conducted a site visit last week. Um, and we just recommended that the commission, um, perhaps discuss having the Mast dot and Mast Port maintenance and easement agreements with Redgate as a condition to be submitted to staff so that we have that in our product file. But that's all we have for this project.
Okay, thank you. Um, as a reminder to members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov and we'll take comments after the commission. And I thought I'd just comment first because I'm always interested in Commissioner Sullivan's thoughts on this, uh, topic. I, I was wondering about the cobblestone, um, because I'm always do, or the pervious cobblestone, because I'm always dubious about, uh, those get, them getting maintained, particularly a strip like that. And I was wondering if there's any reason it couldn't be some kind of just open drainage, whether it's gravel or a swale, or, um, does it, does it need to have that cobble since that's not part of the path? Um, so that's a question for you, but also for Commissioner Sullivan when we get there.
Wonderful. So I'm happy to take it and certainly we value John's opinion as well. Um, in our discussions, the concern about having an open gravel condition at grade, uh, really is that stray stones could find their way onto the pathway and could otherwise limit the ability of cyclists and accessible, uh, users, uh, to have clear access to the path. So in our opinion, trying to top it with a more stable surface that still has appropriate joints to allow water to infiltrate between it, uh, is sort of a good compromise of those two conditions in that location. As I noted, we don't have any traditional tie-in to structural drainage here. So should water for any reason pass over this strip, it actually also gets through uh, a very sizable vegetated buffer and a little bit of a bowl there that's created naturally in that low lying space around the area drain. So I think we're very confident that infiltration can be achieved in this location.
Okay. And, and how will you maintain the permeable pavers over time?
Absolutely. So, um, the goal here in this particular space would be to try to sweep them to remove any loose debris or sediment that is getting into the joints over time, to reset them to make sure they're level if needed. Um, and we'll achieve that through, uh, regular visual inspection. Uh, I noted that, uh, the proponent in this particular case, who is going to take the operational and maintenance responsibilities, uh, also has a vested interest in the adjacent property. And so I think we believe this will be an extension of the good care and the good housekeeping that they're doing on their property.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, Katie, how much, uh, water can you actually hold in this little reservoir that you're building, the permeable strip?
Yeah, absolutely, John. So, uh, the way that this one was, uh, particularly sized was to the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, uh, seeking to do a point two five recharge, uh, depth, which is associated with the conditions and the soils in this particular location. We want to benefit, uh, the promotion of infiltration here, but we also don't want to create an area where we're creating unnecessarily large pathways or disturbance. So trying to balance the two, but compliant with the Stormwater Management Handbook.
Yeah, and you, you know, I'm a, a proponent of, if somebody's really going to maintain something fine, what you're proposing. But I never see any of this stuff maintained properly. Now, it may be different because of the adjacent, um, Massport, you know, wanting to keep things up. Um, although I was like, the water directed to some kind of like catch basin type device, then put into a, about infiltration pipe underneath. First of all, you get more storage. Second of all, it lasts longer. That, that's just what it does. But that's a comment. If this thing here fills up after quarter of an inch, it'll run onto the green grass telling us.
Correct. And, and if we wouldn't mind going back to that slide, you can sort of naturally see some of the grades that are present on our site plan. So Massport has an existing area drain in this space because it is a lower lying space where the Greenway is a little bit more elevated. And there is surrounding turf, um, they, well, I apologize. Maybe they can't go back in the slide deck today. It's been a tough. It's been a tough technical evening, but yes, it, it does. There is a surrounding area of turf lawn that encompasses the area drain.
Yep. And, and, and that's fine. I see that. The, um, does Mast dot realize that any of these conditions and all that, they, it gets put with the land? And now they're being tagged. Uh, so in the future, should things not go the way they're supposed to and uh, Concom wants to enforce an NOI or provisions of it. They'll be going up against Mast dot and they, they know that, right? Because they're the owner of land.
Both Massport and Mast DOT own portions of the Greenway in this particular section. They've been provided with a copy of the order of conditions so that they are aware uh, that both the order travels with the land and that the, uh, conditions remain in perpetuity. Um, it is our expectation that our agreement with Massport and Mast DOT will reflect that they are expecting from the applicant in perpetuity to meet the obligations that are set forth here. And that is something that we're comfortable with.
And my only comment to staff is just, we need to confirm with the appropriate real estate people of both those entities that in fact, they know what they're signing. Not suggesting they don't, but this would be good to put it in the file that we double check with them because they are the owner of the property. And this is a perpetual, uh, maintenance requirement. So that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Linay?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, you talked about the connection to Day Square, but, um, I think for in terms of the cycling or bike, bike network, um, on-street network, there isn't an existing facility there. Is there any, um, coordination or effort being made to improve that on-street, um, connection for people that may be using this path to get on the Greenway?
It's a wonderful question and unfortunately we're only showing you half the picture because when we were here with 355 Bennington, uh, we did talk a lot about that street connection and the additional benefits that project brings forth. So where our gate connection is today, that connects to an easement that exists between the 355 building and the Charter School, Excel Charter School next door. Uh, that area is being improved both for vehicular access to the property, but predominantly for bicycle and pedestrian access in a protected lane that will go between both buildings. And then we'll dovetail up to new improved bike and pet improvements along, uh, Bremen Street and Bennington Street as part of this project. And in both directions, Plan East Boston proceeds to bring even more improvements throughout Day Square in the neighborhood.
Okay, that's great. Um, one little question about the gate closure, and I, I know that is Massport's, um, policy. I, I've heard community concerns about that, not always knowing or, you know, of course, some, some folks would like them to be open all the time, but is there any, I don't know, I guess, could it, could you put some kind of signage, I guess, there to explain to people, um, when those, when that gate will be closed? And then, um, my last comment is just if, if you've had any coordination with the Friends of the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway, um, on this particular project.
Thank you. Um, I think we're, we're certainly open to incorporating signage here. We have heard the same concerns that the dawn to dusk policy with the gated Greenway can present challenges. And certainly we wouldn't want people to come to this connection to find it closed. Uh, so I think that's certainly something we're equally supportive of. Um, we do have to be in full compliance with Massport's policies, uh, which does require the gate so that they are able to secure the Greenway. Um, regarding the Mary Ellen Welch, uh, Friends of the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway, they provided, uh, a lovely comment letter that I, I'm sure Elena is going to read into the record here at some point, and we certainly appreciate both their guidance, uh, and their support of this project.
Great. Glad, uh, sorry, I missed that letter, but glad to hear it. It exists. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Conan?
Thank you, Chair Herbst. Again, you know, the questions or the areas of my questions are being addressed here, which I'm happy to see. Katie, if you could just help me understand where in Day Square this path would lead people to. I'm looking at the satellite map in the presentation that is not zoomed out enough for me to understand. Can you just explain?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So, uh, it is a little tricky when you're looking at how does Day Square exist today? So there are very substantial improvements that will be coming along with the project and with other projects in the neighborhood that really transform a lot of that geometry. Because if you look at it naturally tonight, right, it doesn't feel logical as to where crosswalks would go and where there would be a directly linear path. But the project does seek to realign those spaces in coordination, uh, with the Boston Transportation and Planning Departments, uh, who have long been seeking the improvement of pedestrian crossing and safety in this space, wider networks of sidewalks so that you have more of a linear grid. Um, and then expanded to include pretty significant, uh, uh, bicycle accommodations and shade trees along the whole stretch. So there's a, a very robust, uh, offset mitigation package coming along with the construction of the building.
I'm looking for, thank you. So I'm looking for something very specific.
Oh, sure.
Behind the Excel Academy, the Greenway kind of turns to go under the highway, right? And so that's the place where the extension is being proposed, correct? To go around Excel Academy towards Day Square?
So the extension is being proposed, when you look at the Greenway naturally and it has basically, it almost hooks to your point to go underneath the bridge. It's right there sort of meeting up with that location where it hooks to go up and towards Day Square. And it will be perpendicular in that location functionally, uh, towards Excel and it will follow all the way up until it's Bremen Street.
All the way up until Bremen Street, you said? Okay. Who owns that property where the extension will be?
Absolutely. So a portion of the improvements are on the 355 Bennington property and then a portion is held in easement on the Charter Schools property. And so when we came in for our original, uh, order of conditions for 355, it included both properties. Uh, and this has been designed in coordination with the Charter School as a participant.
So Excel Academy owns part of the property and there is an easement that 355 already has on that. And the rest of the property is owned by 355.
Correct. Correct.
And the offer here is to work in conjunction with Massport and Mass DOT to maintain this in perpetuity by three fifty-five. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Let's see, according to Massport rules.
Correct. We will be following their rules and their guidance for the standards of the greenway in this project.
Standards of the greenway that, that Massport has established.
Correct.
So this will be like a Massport part of the greenway, in other words.
The land under this proposed project will always be, be held with, uh, Massport, but the extension, which is outside of the gate. Again, will be, will go with those landowners and they will both maintain it, uh, and it will be functionally separate from the greenway within the easement.
Part of the greenway is not under Massport control and that doesn't have the restrictions that we talked about in terms of access. So the reason I ask is because it's, I'm not sure why it all has to come under the same rules of use. The, all, all of this extension. Um, it also, I mean, this is a nice amenity. Go ahead.
Oh, I want to clarify. Everything that we showed you on screen today comes under the, the guise of Massport's operation of the greenway. Because everything we've shown on the plan physically today is on Massport or Mass DOT controlled land, all operated by Massport. You are very correct that the extension itself would not be subject to the same, and there is no gate or closure of the extension within the easement at any hours of operation.
I see. Thank you. That, that's helpful to know. And so is, is this a complication now that there is a third party involved in maintaining? The greenway extension, it just, I don't know if I've seen a precedent for that. And I don't know if the, that has been thought through. Um, what complication, if anything, that represents? If the ownership changes, then what happens? Is it, is, uh, does the perpetuity hold no matter what?
It's our understanding that the memorandum of, of understanding for these properties, uh, would, for three fifty-five Bennington, the property. Would go with, uh, whoever owns three fifty-five Bennington at that time.
Okay. So for the public, if there's an issue, who, who are they going to call?
So Massport would retain all the operational control that they have for the greenway and for everything that you see here. Um, but if Massport were to reach out to the proponent and ask for anything to be repaired or maintained, it would be the responsibility of our, the applicant.
And the signage will indicate that.
Uh, the signage, uh, will be in conformance with Massport's typical signage, um, which I believe says to contact them when they have, uh, questions.
And then they will contact whoever. Okay, thank you. Looking forward to it.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Estes Margiassi? Hope you're on mute.
Sorry. Uh, my question had been about how this particular thing connected to the rest of the world and the conversation we just had has answered my questions. It does look like a useful little connection now. Um, that actually does provide some value, uh, further out towards Day Square. Uh, which wasn't, wasn't immediately available, uh, obvious, um, in the, in the, in the, in the drawings, but with the conversation nowadays.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Eleanor, do we have any comments from?
Uh, yes. So, uh, I believe that Katie mentioned the, um, the letter, which is both available in the, uh, linked folder, which is in the public notice. Uh, as well as in the dry folder that the commissioners use to review the project. So it's available in both places and it was a letter of support. Um, and then I also see that Gail Miller's hand is raised.
Okay, uh, Ms. Miller?
Actually representing the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway, um, organization tonight, um, you have the letter, um, it does support. Um, I, I think we're trying to draw some distinction and, and just as I see the plans tonight, I'm not really certain how the tree. Lie to the, to the path.
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller, I think you're. Your, your voice is being choppy. Uh, can you try again?
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure why. I have four connections, I think, here.
That's better.
I don't know if this is better.
Yes.
Yeah, the, um, the applicant, is that okay now? Yes?
Better, yeah.
I don't know. Okay. I, I don't know with the, I, I'm just curious about the application of the trees and the locations vis a vis the path. Um, it doesn't seem like it offers shade to the path. And I think it was our request that perhaps instead of low plantings, that there would be shade trees along at, um. You know, just along this little path, really, um, it would be helpful, um, because that's quite a heat island. Where this, uh, project is going up. I mean, it is, it's really a lot of hardscape. So I'm just wondering, is it, is it impossible to put trees, uh, right along the pathway? As opposed to off, off to the side there?
Sure. So, uh, it, it's a great question. Uh, when we were thinking about the planting and what would be appropriate within the greenway, we met with Massport's operations team and Arborist. Both to address how we might put an accessible pathway through some of the existing vegetation. And then what made the most sense is we were replanting. Um, and I think the cadence that we have agreed to, uh, with Massport's team, uh, really seeks to follow sort of the rhythm of how they are planted out there today. Which is that the paths are a little bit separate from where the trees are to provide a little bit more space and, and not to have any directly. Uh, adjacent potential for roots or others to kind of grow into your pathways over time and lead them to not be accessible. Um, and to also make sure that we don't have clusters of trees where the cadence out there again is, is a little bit more, less grouping and more individual. Allowing trees to get bigger and to thrive over time. I think we are, we're always certainly happy to, to think about better ways to integrate it in there. And as we get out there and we mark out where the trees are going. Um, certainly, uh, if the conservation agent would like to be there with us as well, uh, with Massport. Happy to talk about it because we certainly do see some benefits. Uh, but operationally, we want to be sensitive to the idea that we certainly wouldn't want to present a, uh, potential restriction to an accessible path. Through root growth or other prohibiting of the trees getting bigger and healthier over time.
Yeah, when I, I would just like to add that all the trees that were planted along, uh, Bremen Street Park. Um, they're magnificent and something like that is of course always embraced by the community. Um, once, particularly for the beauty and particularly for the shade. So, you know, anywhere we can grab more shade for bicyclists or pedestrians and, you know, it would be great if even there was a bench right there, but. Um, I just don't know if, you know, you're open to more, um, sort of thoughts on that.
Uh, I think we, on, uh, the extension that we, we did for three fifty-five Bennington within the easement. Uh, have embraced a lot of the, the items that you've talked about, much more shade canopy over those parts of the sidewalk that connect into the network. Uh, street furniture, a, a lot of amenity. I think in this location, again, we are just trying to mimic more of the language that is traditional to the connections onto the greenway and the greenway itself. Um, but I think there will be those great opportunities within the easement connection space, uh, to have all of those opportunities. More shade, the ability to sit on benches, uh, in appropriate locations, uh. The ability to tie up one's bicycle while you're enjoying, uh, the retail space and others that three fifty-five Bennington offers as a mixed use project.
Yeah, I, I, I might just want to throw in one more suggestion, something, uh, akin to a trellis type of, you know, a setup. Where we wouldn't have to worry about trees, uh, tree roots and upsetting the system there under, underground. So, um, I, I would throw that out as a kind of a last minute thought. Um, that would certainly, you know, could hold vines and everything else. So. A trellis even without vines offers some sort of protection from the harsh sun, so. That's all I'd like to, um, suggest.
Okay, thank you. Um.
And, I apologize. I, um, I also just wanted to quickly note that, um, you know, especially having been on site. The area is relatively shaded from the overpass. So I think that that might also limit potential tree plantings there. It seems to be like. A, a bit of a, a trickier site. Um, but, uh, yeah, so ju- just wanted to flag that as far as the, the sort of considerations for the space.
Okay. And could you just remind us all the, uh, additional special agreement that you wanted to propose?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so our, uh, suggestion had just been to include a condition, um, that would, uh, require the applicant to send us the. Uh, maintenance and easement agreements between Mastod and Massport and Redgate, uh, so that we have those on file. And, um, we also, so I know that Commissioner Sullivan had recommended that, uh, we maybe tailor that a bit more to also. Just make sure that there's confirmation from, uh, Massport and Mastod that they are on the same page about the, um, about the maintenance. But I think that if we, if we get signed agreements in some capacity, then hopefully that means that everybody has looked it over and, and is on the same page.
Yes, I, I think the, the agreement should be in the, in the special condition and it, and I think, uh, that you can connect also with the department separately to make sure they're aware of that. Um, and I also would like to add a special condition, uh, that, that captures the, that maintenance, that the maintenance on the. Previous papers is required for the, the sweeping and resetting, uh, as needed.
And did we want to add a, an additional condition about the signage, about the rules and policies for gate closure times especially? Or was that something that was still being considered?
I'm not sure where that came from.
Oh, I think, uh, just the, the charm is I think of, of, um, folks using the, the greenway and maybe not knowing when Massport closes the gates.
I understand. Was that a, was that a proposal that one of the commissioners made with Conan? Were you looking?
Oh, yeah, sorry. It came up during the, the discussion tonight.
I understand.
I had mentioned that, yeah. And I think.
Okay.
In the letter too, from the, um. Friends, I think they did ask for signage.
On the opening and closing times, uh. For the applicant, are you, are you amenable to those three special conditions?
Uh, we are amenable to those three conditions and I would note for, for signage, we would anticipate that obviously it will likely be on the fence that is on the three fifty-five property. Uh, which is sort of the gateway into getting into this space. So happy to work with the commission on that.
Okay. So at this point, I would accept a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with the three special conditions that we've identified.
Before I move on that, just want to be clear that, um, on the easement, we probably want to say all pertinent entities. Because, um, the Charter School is also a party to this. And, um. I'm not sure I got complete clarity on the signage. If it goes on the gate to the, um, to three fifty-five, does it mean that will, gate will also close? At dusk. Because the extension is different from the greenway itself.
Correct. The extension is different from the greenway itself and the signage would be, um, on the fence as it faces three fifty-five. So it would not include the Charter School.
Okay, great.
Okay. And I think with your, uh, suggestion, all, all, all of the agreements, uh, will be provided. Uh, okay.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, so it passes, uh, five to nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to the commission. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Uh, so the next item on our agenda is a notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six, twenty thirty-six. From Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., on behalf of the City of Boston Public Works Department. For repairs to the ALH culvert, uh, roadway resurfacing, relocating existing fencing, replacing guard rail, guard rails and bridge railings. Replacing sidewalks and revegetating roadway shoulders on American Legion Highway at the Stony Brook, uh, Crossing in Mattapan. Uh, resource areas are land underwater, uh, riverbank, twenty-five front riverfront area, twenty-five front waterfront area. And a hundred foot, uh, buffer to the bank. And who's here for the applicant?
Uh, Matthew Lundstedt, I'm with Comprehensive Environmental in Bolton, Mass.
Okay, go right ahead.
I have, uh, actually with me in support, if we need them, uh, Benson is the chief structural engineer. Uh, in engineering in Boston, uh, and Joe Fleury from his staff. As well as Sudhir and Shaver from the AI companies, uh, the structural bridge designers for the work. Um, next slide. I, uh, I, I took one of the plans and just for the purposes of rest of the presentation, kind of labeled them. How I'll refer to where some of the stuff is. Um. When I say northeast quadrant, that's the NE or NWSWSE, just so, uh, folks can orient themselves. Um, and then I also kind of beefed up, uh, our delineation was bank delineation. That's the, um. I put that green zigzag over it so folks could see that. Um, that's the resource area or near high water for Stony Brook. And then, um, I put the flow direction on there. Um. What we're proposing to do, um, the culvert needs, uh, some, uh, structural repairs. Uh, doesn't necessarily require replacement, but there are some, um, conditions. Which, uh, they'll need some concrete repairs as well as some crack fixing down underneath inside the concrete box culvert. Uh, along with that, there'll be that shaded gray area along the American Legion Highway would be the limits. Where we'd be replacing, uh, the pavement, redoing guard rail and sidewalks. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, I can quickly run through the, the impacts. Um, they're all temporary. We have no permanent changes. Um. Inland bank forty linear feet, uh, is impacted basically for placement of our cofferdam system. Uh, and then twenty-two thousand square feet of temporary, uh, within the hundred foot buffer. Uh, then you see the land underwater there is fifteen hundred and eighty square feet. Will, is basically the area which will be encompassed in each. Uh, we'll do the cofferdam and the work inside the culvert in two halves. Uh, and then your ordinance, uh, the riverfront area is eleven thousand two hundred square feet and the waterfront is the seventy-three thirty-five. Next slide. Uh, this is just to orient everyone. This is, um, the American Legion Highway westbound looking west. Um, the culvert is, it, it's hard to, obviously you can't see it and the head walls are, uh, even with the ground on either side. But the culverts under where that brown guard rail is, that guard rail runs along. The length of the wing walls plus the culvert itself. And next slide is just looking the other way on the other side, same deal. There's fence all along the highway, but there's guard rail in front of that fence. Uh, uh, through the limits of this culvert and the Stony Brook, um, area. Next slide. Uh, this is Stony Brook, uh, downstream, looking downstream. I just wanted to kind of put a typical picture in there. Um, this is a, it's shown on the, the last paper USGS as intermittent here. Uh, the contributing watershed's only about eleven hundred acres, uh, and we have seen this, um. Be pretty still and stagnant and almost dry at times. Uh, next slide. This is, um, I, I just wanted to put in a picture, typical, um, this is the top of one of the wing walls. And why we're here is if this area continues to deteriorate. Then you lose support for both that fence, the guard rail, the sidewalk, and then the road. So eventually if this continues to deteriorate and, uh, goes un, uh, fixed. You, you'll start to, uh, have impacts on the pedestrian and bike traffic in that highway itself. Next slide. Uh, this is a, this is, um, a typical bank, uh, corner adjacent to the wing walls. Uh, I just wanted to, if, if folks haven't been out there, I wanted everyone to ki- kind of have an idea of how those banks look. We would be um, we'd be coming down, once, once they put, uh, once the cofferdams get put in, we'd be coming down, probably just, it'd be foot traffic with materials uh, and small tools uh, and the men to do that work up underneath the culvert. The only other thing you'll see out on the face is when we go to redo those repairs, there'll be some form work on the outside, probably, you know, maybe sticks out a foot or two. Uh, so when I get to talking about any vegetation clearing or potential tree cutting, it's really just going to be limited to like, you know, those branches not scratching folks. Uh, and a couple trees, which I'll talk about at the end of the presentation. Next slide. Uh, so the next few uh, pictures are of the potential trees we may lose. If we don't need to remove them, we're not going to. Uh, depending on how the contractor uh, ends up proposing to do the work and access the work. So in that northwest quadrant, um, there's a, there's a ten inch ash which is dead and a six inch ash which might go. Next slide. Here on the northeast, adjacent to the northeast wing wall, uh, there's that twelve inch maple which is dead. And then some uh, a four inch, I don't know what. I call them weed trees that guys kind of, you know, they were weeds that grew up to become trees uh, and some underbrush potentially. Uh, next, next slide. On the southwest, there's uh, those three maples might would, i- if they're too close to the wall for the um, forms, concrete forms to be put in, um, they'd they'd be cut. And then next slide. Uh, and and the southeast, there's a maple that's dead and two ash which are also dead. And like I said, depending on how he uh, how the contractor, which path he decides the easiest side to go down and the extent of the forms. Um, these trees may may not be in the way and may not get cut, but we wanted to show you what could potentially uh, be cut. He he also may not have to fully kind of not clear, but just that pathway may not be on all four corners besides putting up the form work. Uh, next slide. That's all I had.
I'm muted. Uh, thank you. Uh, Eleanor, what do you have for us on this?
Uh, yeah, so we had a few outstanding questions after our site visit last week. Um, I know that we had discussed, uh, you know, including this tree work and the presentation. So thank you for including that in the scope of work. Um, I know that we had discussed also the question of site access. So um, when we were on site, I think that we were told that um, there, to do this work, uh, the applicant wouldn't need to go through St. Michael Cemetery or the Boston Nature Center and Wildlife Sanctuary. But I am wondering if the trees are on these um, property owner's property, if there's been permission given for that tree work. Um, and then the other question is whether uh, this does constitute um, emergency roadwork because that was the reason that was checked in the filing for why the project is exempt from uh, conforming with uh, the Massachusetts stormwater standards.
Correct. And that uh, I'll answer that. I can a- address that first, that last question first. Um, that basically that picture I showed of that deterioration is typical at um, the four, all four wing walls and the headwalls. And those are basically what's retaining you know, American Legion Highway itself. So if that, if those were to fail, we'd lose the support of the safety guardrail and the fencing there and you'd start to lose like roadway. Uh, and that's why we we considered it, um, we're considering it emergency type work. It's not, you know, it's not tomorrow failing, but you never know. Uh, oh, and I'm I'm sorry, what was the um? Oh, the I, we believe the trees are within right of way. We can double check that. And if they're not, um, we can talk to the landowners. We still have to go to parks after this process continues, uh, concludes. Um, and um, the uh, the the uh, access will be, like I said, only a path. And we can do this work from up on uh, American Legion Highway. We don't have to come in through either of those properties.
That's helpful. Thank you. Um, and then the um, the other note that we had on this is just that we would recommend including a special condition stating that no heavy machinery is allowed to travel down the slope of the bank to reach the culvert. Um, and then I also just wanted to clarify, we, so you mentioned the cofferdam installation. Um, and I believe that we had discussed that with the team on site, but could you just, you know, for the record, also go through how that's going to be installed?
Sure. So what we've permitted um, is a, uh, what we see a lot. We can't guarantee it's exactly what the contractor will do. There are some uh, pretty clever proprietary systems which they could also use, but they've got a smaller footprint than we're what are showing. Uh, and what we're thinking is um, if you've, if you know the term heavy bag, they're the bigger sandbags that are um, used for berm and emergency floodwork. Uh, they're basically a three by three by three sandbag. So um, much like you'd build a temporary berm in a flood situation with smaller sandbags. Um, they'll use these sandbags. They'll get filled up on top. Um, lowered over, you know, with a crane or a small piece of equipment over the edge of the bridge and sat on, um, you know, either adjacent to the bank or in the bed. And then we we think they'll do, use a come along system, which would be, you know, mounted to the other end of the culvert and they'll just drag these bags in um, kind of u- using that system. There are other proprietary systems. Like you said, they're they're smaller footprint. Um, they're basically plastic. I I, for lack of a better term, they look like the Jersey Bear you see on the side of the road. Uh, they're empty. Um, they're easy to carry in. They're only about four or five and they go together kind of like Legos. Uh, and then you fill them with water and that gives you the weight to hold it down and resist the, you know, uh, and you use poly plastic wrapped over around them to seal the cracks in between. Um, like I said, we we prefer from a bid standpoint and construction standpoint to leave that the exact method they use up to the uh, contractor for means and methods, but the the uh, the the sandbag system would be the simplest, uh, just a little tougher to install. Um, the proprietary systems, you know, are the other way. They're more expensive because they're proprietary, but a little easier to install, but it it'll, it, we only have to, um, we only have to provide enough room for, uh, if you could picture a couple guys with a a grout pumping system, which is a small diameter hose, working in the dry, just on small scaffolding. You know, not even, uh, uh, cause you know, we don't have much room to work in there. So it's really, you know, it's like a, it would look like a drywall operation or something that small. So we don't need equipment in the brook.
Thank you. No, that's um, extremely helpful. And so based on that description, it sounds like there wouldn't be heavy machinery going down. Um, or
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It it, there's no room.
Right, right. No. So including, I mean, no, no vehicles, no.
So tight on those banks. There's, 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 and there's really no need um, besides getting the cofferdam in there. The equipment, when any heavy equipment wouldn't be able to fit in the culvert anyway.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, Chair Hubs, those were all of my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Eleanor. Uh, before we go to commissioners, as a reminder to members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, um, so DCAM and the Nature Center uh, did some work just a little upstream of this um, of year or two ago. And one of the comments they made was that this particular culvert uh, needed to be dredged also because it's blocking um, the waterway, uh, you know, long-term improvements. What, have you coordinated any of this work with them and how much dredging, if any, you're going to be doing? And how are we protecting the waterway and all that from, you know, contract the means and methods? If you leave everything up to them, they'll just chip away, um, stuff falls into the water bed.
Right.
Et et cetera. I mean, this, this can go awry real quick.
No, no. They'll be required to set up containment and collect that material, uh, anything they have to chip off uh, and remove that debris. And that we've, the the couple of years we've been involved with this project and watching it, we've seen those, the sediment come and go in there as the flows come up and down. Uh, at, at this point, I be- because the work we have to do is so minor and structural in nature, uh, it hadn't been considered like a looking at that whole stream system, it's clear that sometimes some slugs of sediment move through um, and accumulate in various points and come and go. So we're not proposing any dredging only because it's a structural repairs. Um, I I and I'm not sure the the bridge folks with the city or the, um, you know, our uh, prime AI have um, been approached about dredging as part of the project. It would, um, it would be a substantially different um, operation to what we've got proposed for repairs. But they will, our, the contract specifications will require they clean up any debris, uh, any concrete debris or or chipped, you know, uh, form work, sawdust, bits of wood, that that'll all have to be cleaned up. Uh, and there'll be full-time inspection on this, on this project.
Well, the full-time inspection will be um, by your firm or the city?
Not my firm, and I think, I think the city at 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 some point decides whether to be in their internal inspectors or someone on the consultant's team.
Yeah, you know, my concern is if we have the concrete debris fall into the bed, the easiest way to clean it up is step on it so it goes into the mud.
Yeah, I I would hope that. I I I've seen it before. I used to work in bridge construction for the DOT in Connecticut and uh, I I I hear you. I've seen contractors do all kinds of crazy things, but hopefully that's, you know, with the controls we have in place and have an inspector on site, we'll be able to manage that.
Yeah. Um, so there's, there's no dredging at all with the, in the, there's been no coordination. So I guess in the future, if that stream bed needs to be cleaned, they'll come back to the city. My assumption is the city owns that piece of property under the bridge. Uh, so they're responsible for removing any, any and all of that uh, debris.
Yes. And I think a a project of that nature would probably involve beyond the culvert too, because I'm I'm sure there's, I'm sure along the Stony Brook, there's some areas which are eroding and contributing that sediment. So it might be part of a bigger, you know, uh, stream enhancement project, maybe?
Yeah.
And they'd, and in in cooperation with both Audible and Upstream and and DKM and and probably the cemetery folks as well.
Yep. That that's all I had.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Uh, Commissioner Linay?
Um, I have some questions, the comments on the trees. Um, were they, was there an assessment done by an arborist? Um, do you mean, you know, the this condition, the characteristics of the trees such as dead and?
Uh, our, our, yeah, our, not an arborist, but our wetland scientist labeled the dead, uh, and we still have to go through parks.
Okay.
Uh, and and we can, we can work with the city arborists on, um, i- i- if we, if we get to that point, we'd have to, we'd, there's a process in the construction uh, contract of, you know, he's got to tell us which tree, he's got to flag which trees he believes need to be caught if necessary. And then um, uh, consulted with the, and we'll have inspectors out there consulted with the arborists.
Okay, great. Um, and then is there any, if if the the folks doing the work are just entering the site on foot, um, but there's still maybe some potent potential for um, compaction or erosion on that slope, any measures that will um, kind of stabilize that during, during the work?
Yeah, well, uh, not during the work. They may, you know, they may have to, you know, I'm I'm hoping it's not during mud season, it's during low flow and they won't have a problem, but they may do something like lay some planks down temporarily with, you know, cross bracing to kind of not act as steps, but just stabilize the area and so it doesn't turn into mud rut. Uh, and we plan on revegetating, at least reseeding when we leave. You can see it's, it's, I I think there's so much shade there between the wing walls and the brush and the trees that are there that I I don't see, I I don't see much ground cover uh, any of the four co- corners, but um, when we're done, we can seed and see what it'll take, do a shade mix, a slope shade mix.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry. Commissioner Conan?
Thank you, Chair Hubs. I thought I had the answer, but I'm not too sure. So I'm going to ask the I understand an arborist hasn't looked at the trees, but the the dead trees, and I understand maybe a post-mortem hasn't been done, but any guess as to what's killing them?
No, actually, I haven't seen them in person. I'd have to, they did look debarked too, so I'm not sure it's a disease or just they're in the, the wrong, the wrong place for their, you know, what what the kind of tree they want to be, um, or if there's a wildlife activity. Um, but we could certainly, I could have my wetland scientists or one of my plant folks go out and and look. Uh, I don't, it didn't seem systemic. It seemed more um, urban environment related.
If I could, and I think the ash trees, we've seen, you know, widespread die off unfortunately, the old ash pour, but.
That's what I was wondering about. If it's pest related, maybe you see some sign of that, right?
Right.
But it it isn't just the ash that's dying, it looks like.
No, two of the, two of the ma- two are maples, right?
Yeah, I mean, if we can get some insight into that, that'd be helpful.
Sure, we, uh, the, there's an arbor, the, the city has an arborist on staff. We can work with them and and um, we can ask those questions.
Great. That that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
I was wondering about storm flow when the cofferdam and and work area are in place. Um, Mr. Sullivan's questions about dredging might be moot if uh, if the channel is only half as wide as it is normally and there's a storm, um, is it going to pass all the flow, um, or we can see a lot of erosion through the channel?
Um, the, the bags are designed at a height uh, that the two-year storm could pass on the open side, uh, and over that would would flood and they're sealed. So our work area would flood, um, you know, if we know there's a big storm coming, obviously, they're going to pull their staffal, their scaffolding equipment, uh, and basically it would just, it would flood and if the flows come up, um, that's the only capacity hydraulically we'll have lost while that stuff is in place. And it's not, it won't be a long, it were, we, I would anticipate we'd do this at low flow just for ease of construction. Uh, and it won't be a long, the, the most of the work is that head wall and wing wall work you saw. Um, we only need that cofferdam system to to seal those couple cracks um, and do the pressure, uh, the the grout work uh, and fix, you know, some other small, small spalls in the concrete. I can't imagine that they'd have that. It's, I think it's going to take them as long to set up the the cofferdam stuff as it will to actually do the work, probably a matter of weeks, couple of weeks.
Okay, makes sense. That, but the the flow over the top of the cofferdam does make sense.
Yeah, we design, we design it to flood.
Okay, um, I, it sounded to me that like we've definitely won a special condition for no heavy machinery around the bank. I'm wondering also with some of the concerns about. Treat, you know, taking care of the bank and, and whether material get ground into the ground, whether. Uh, and since we don't know yet exactly how the work's going to be done, whether we need a condition on submitting final plans for. For commission staff to review would seem to make sense. Uh, with those two conditions, I would accept a, a motion to approve the order of conditions and close the hearing.
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Bargas Margiassi?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye, and, and so that passes five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh. Next on the agenda is a notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six dash twenty thirty-nine and Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero thirteen. From the Vertex Companies LLC on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation. For the proposed demolition of three pavilions, the removal of concrete pavers and asphalt paving. And the addition of a pervious park, pervious walkway and six benches at Georgia's Island. Uh, and the resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. And who's here for the applicant?
Hi, uh, my name is Gary DeBloss with the Vertex Companies.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, so yeah, uh, good evening, everyone. As I mentioned, my name's Gary DeBloss. I'm a senior project manager with, uh, with Vertex and I'm here representing the Department of Conservation, uh. Conservation and Recreation. Um, our project is located in Harbor Island State Park, um, out on Georgia's Island, more specifically. Uh, last year, DCI, uh, DCR constructed a new, uh, pavilion. On the island, uh, it was permitted with an NOI in two thousand and three. Uh, it's shown just to the right of our limit of disturbance here, um, on the graphic. With completion of that pavilion finishing up, uh, this spring. They've decided to demolish the three existing pavilions, uh, the. Not sure on the exact year of construction, but they're relatively old. Um, and replace those with a small pervious walkway, uh, and some benches overlooking the water. Um, the, the limit of work shown there is outside of the coastal beach boundary, the coastal bank boundary. Uh, they want hundred-foot buffers as well as the twenty-five-foot waterfront boundary. The only jurisdiction layer it's in is the land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, which is, is shown in, in blue there. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, as I mentioned, following demolition, the DCR will be installing the walkway shown there. Um, on that graphic, uh, with the benches overlooking the water. Um, any other disturbed area will be restored with lumen seed. Um, it'll be a native, uh. Native mix that's made for, for saltwater, near saltwater environments. Um. With that project, we are decreasing the, the impervious area by thirty-four hundred square feet. Um. And that, that just about wraps up. It's a, it's about the simplest project you could, uh, you could present for, so.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions, but won't waste more of your time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Elena, what do you have on this?
Yes, so, um, speaking, I think to the scope of the project, we did not conduct a site visit for this work. Um, and we did not really have any, any additional flags for it. Um, the conditions should be ready to go. And, uh, as we've already mentioned, we have file numbers ready for them.
Okay, you missed your chance to get out to Georgia's Island.
I know.
You should have insisted.
Had to go back and forth on that for a while.
All right. Um, before we get to the commissioners, as a reminder to members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Linay?
I'm just curious, is there, um. Concrete puddings on those benches and how do you, how do you get concrete out to an island or do you just mix it on, on site?
So the way we're, we're mounting the benches are just on small precast blocks that'll be just below the surface, really. They're not meant to be fully anchored, just enough that people don't move them around easily. Um. They did for the construction of the pavilion. Bring out concrete trucks to pour the, uh, the slab for the pavilion. So. They did haul them out there, um, on the ferries and on the, the transport. Uh, but for this project, we don't, we don't need that.
Great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Condon?
What happens to the, this, uh, the, the debris from the demolition of the pavilions?
Uh, it'll all be loaded and brought off the island and disposed of.
Any chance of any reuse?
Uh, there are no plans for reuse of the materials. Um, I should mention, I, I didn't bring it up there, but, um. DCR did do the hazardous building materials survey, um, and, and nothing came back positive for asbestos, um. Or lead or, or any other things that were of issue there, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
No questions.
Okay, um, I actually have a question about the product that you're using for the walkway, the organic lock stabilized aggregate. Um, that's new to me and I'm, I was hoping you could tell me if it's, if it's a new product or, um. I'm interested because it looked like it might be, be a good alternative to paving or to stone dust, which was always of interest.
Correct, and it, I, I'll be very honest, it's a new product to me. This is the first project, uh, that I've, I've used it on. Um, speaking with some of the folks from DCR, they've used this product quite a bit. Um, they, they were the ones who specifically said, you know, oh, we, we've used this before. It's the perfect product for this application. Um, and DCR seems to really like to stay consistent with the, with the products and vendors they use throughout the Commonwealth. Um, I, I think it's easier for them with maintenance and, um, to have similar products throughout, um. Every bit of research I've done on it. It seems fantastic. Um, I don't, we'll see when bits come in if. There's a huge increase on, on unit price, right? And maybe that's why we don't see it more often. Um, but I'm interested to learn about it more as we move forward here with construction. Um. I've gotten the initial literature, but I, I'd like to see it actually installed and see how it functions in reality. Um. But yeah. Yeah, on the surface, it seems like the perfect pro- product. Um, and in my experience, I think it's perfect really isn't, but.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe cost, maybe cost is the issue, we'll see.
Maybe so. Well, I, I guess I'll just flag it to staff. I'd, I'd really like to know how it performs because frankly, we haven't seen DCR. Propose it for anything before us and they're, they're going to start us, because I don't know, we'll be asking about it. So, um, okay, with, uh, oh, I'm sorry, were there any, uh, questions, uh, from the public? I don't think I, I don't see any. Do you have anybody, Elena?
Apologies, uh, no, just making a note to, you know, casually follow up on, uh, how the, how the material ends up, uh, faring for the, for the path.
You get that island trip after all.
Yes, exactly. Um, but no, we, uh, yeah, did not receive any comments about this project and I'm not seeing any hands raised either.
Okay, with that in mind, I'd, uh, accept a motion to close the hearing and, uh, approve the orders of conditions.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
Aye.
And I'd vote aye, so that's, uh, passes five, nothing. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
All right, uh, our next item is a notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, twenty thirty-eight from GEI Consultants. On behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed removal of part of the existing fender system and the installation of new piles. A timber pile cap and cross and horizontal timber bracings between the new piles and existing piles at Conley. Container Terminal, twenty Farragut Road, South Boston, Mass. Uh, it's a designated port area and land under the ocean. And who's here for the project?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Chair Chris Bush, uh, Senior Environmental Planner with Massport. Um, here, uh, with our consulting G I to present on this, uh, maintenance, uh, repair work. Out at Conley Terminal and I'll hand it off to a G I to, uh, get into the specifics.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, everybody for, for hearing this tonight. Uh, we can move to the next slide. Um, so a, as mentioned, the, the, the project location is at Conley Container Terminal, uh, in South Boston. Um, it, it's just north of Castle Island and across the bay, bay from the airport. Um, it is a designated port area, uh, next slide. Um, so Conley Terminal itself i- is very large, so to, just to put it in context, where specifically on the site we're talking about. We're talking right at the corner of berth fifteen and sixteen, uh, as, as we enter into the harbor, uh, right before the reserve channel. Um, that, that corner there has seen some deterioration and, and needs some, um, overall stabilization. Next slide, please. Um, so it, it is in a female flood zone, it is in a velocity zone, um, so, so it is, uh, land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, next slide, please. Um, in, in addition to that, uh, we're, we're within the hundred-foot, uh, buffer of the bank. Um, again, the, the limited work that we're talking about is specifically just on, located, isolated on, on that north corner there. Um, and, and then the bulkhead i- is the coastal bank, uh, associated with this site and the, the piles, uh. That are proposed and that are going to be removed as part of this project i- is, um, land under the ocean. Next slide, please. So a little bit more specifically, um, the, the image on the left, um, th- those piles in red are the ones that. When we did an inspection out there are missing, um, the, the orange ones that are out there are, are in failed or, or extremely poor condition. Um, so, so that is the need for, for the stabilization of the corner, uh, of, of, of the two bears. Um, the, uh, the image on the right, there, there's those, um, nine piles that, that are shaded there on the corner. Th- those piles are to be removed, um, so they, they will be, uh, removed in their entirety. Um, the, the intent is to, um, get a vibratory hammer on the ones that we can and put a chain fall on the ones that we can't. And, and try, and extract, extract the piles that way. Um, next slide, please. And then as part of the, the retrofit for that, we will be installing three new piles. Um, they, they will be installed at a batter so that we can actually spring them underneath the, the corner of that deck. Um, once we have those piles in place, we will put a new timber pile cap on top of them. Secure them to, to the, um, the piles we just installed. And then we're going to install a series of, of cross bracing, both, both laterally and longitudinally to lock those new piles. Into the overall system to, to give, uh, additional support to the corner of that pier. Um, thi- this, this pier is condemned to most traffic in most operations within the terminal. Um, this repair is just, just to support the, uh, critical infrastructure that is up there, some of the radar and some of the other equipment that are on the deck. Um, and it's intended to be, uh, a repair for that and not any kind of upgrades or cha- change any of the use of, of the pier itself. And I think that's it. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Elena, what do you have for us on this one?
Uh, yes, so for this one, I just wanted to flag that DMF had provided comments, uh, they. It stated that because of the scope of work, they didn't recommend a time of year restriction or the use of a turbidity curtain. However, there were a few, uh, recommendations and comments that they made in that letter, so I would just, um, maybe recommend that the commission include. Those items as, uh, special conditions to be added on to the project.
Okay, uh. I'm sorry, uh, before we go to the, uh, commissioners, as a reminder to members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Linay?
No questions.
Commissioner Condon?
I did have a couple of questions, um. The. It seems like the ones that are failed are upfront. And the ones that are, the piles that are missing are behind them. I would have thought if this has anything to do with the ocean, it would kind of be the other way around. Can you explain what may have caused this pattern of failure?
So the, the existing piles out there are, are timber piles. They're, they're very old piles, um, so they've just seen deterioration over the years. Um, there, there's a couple marine boers that we, that we see in the industry that deteriorate some of the piles. Um, so, so there is a lot of limnoa and torito damage of those piles. Um, so, so that is the damage underneath the deck that we're seeing. Um, the fender piles on, on the, uh, the offshore end that, that we are removing that are. Um, they're, they're in poor condition themselves, but part of the reason we're removing them is to gain access. Um, but most of them are no longer attached to the pier deck themselves, so it's, it's also a, um. A, a bit of a mitigation for, for potential navigational hazards in the future as those begin to deteriorate.
I understand about, thank you, I understand about the fender, uh, piles. I'm, I'm talking about the orange and the red ones. Alan, so you see the orange ones that are failed and the red ones that are missing? So, so these, the red ones, there are lo- there are many of them and they're just like completely missing, right?
Yeah, so, so we, we didn't do a full dive inspection to see, um, if, if they still exist be- below the waterline. Um, the, 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 that's what we can see from the historic, comparing the historic drawings to what we can see when we went underneath the pier deck.
Alan, I can, I can also add to this. Sorry, this is, uh, Chet Myers. I'm the, uh, Deputy Director for, um. For Maritime Projects and Capital Programs, uh, at Massport and, uh, Commissioner Caden, it's, it's a great question, um. But, uh, there isn't always a rhyme or reason as to why certain piles deteriorate faster, um. In, in specific situations, uh, we know that all the piles are always deteriorating, um, at all times, all timber piles because, um. Because the marine boers that, that Alan mentioned, um, but we couldn't necessarily say for certain why certain piles. Would have deteriorated more quickly than other piles necessarily, but I, we, we certainly understand, uh, your question though.
Thank you. Well, it certainly seems like there is some sort of pattern. And this is not the first time we're hearing about deteriorating, failed and maybe even missing piles. So this may be even a more, a wider issue and, and we all know that it is. It'd be good to learn more about this pattern of failure to avoid fixing things more reactively if it is. The sort of thing that's happening more and more, or if it's picking up pace or anything, maybe Chris, as, and maybe you know, Chad, about just. Is this a wider issue? We, we're only discussing this project here right now. I'm aware of that, but just starting to get concerned about, uh.
Sure, I, I, I mean, I would say that, um, marine bore activity in Boston Harbor is a wider issue. Um, it's not necessarily a bad issue, uh, because the reason marine boers are so active is because the harbor is cleaner than it used to be. Um, some of these timber piles were installed a very long time ago and they lasted a very long time in Boston Harbor. Because Boston Harbor was so polluted that the organic activity was very low in the harbor, but since the harbor has cleaned up. The marine bore activity has, uh, accelerated, uh, which is one of the reasons why there's a big transition. I mean, as opposed to structural reasons, which is also important, but it's one of the reasons why. There's been sort of a, a migration away from timber piles and towards like steel piles that don't degrade as quickly. But I will say that this particular location. Um, and we, we could go back to the, to the, to the schematic of Conley Terminal and you can see that that location is actually. Um, right at the, uh, turning basin. Now, there's a turning basin for the reserve channel. Uh, so the big vessels that come into Conley Terminal or the cruise vessels that come, uh, into the cruise port, they turn right there. So there is very likely more stress on that particular location than other locations. That doesn't necessarily mean that the piles have degraded more quickly in that location. It just means that they're also subject to additional lateral force from vessels, um. And therefore they may break, um, or become, uh, more damaged more quickly because they're subject to both forces. Both the degradation and, and the, and the impact and, and, uh, G I is, is designing, uh, to, uh, accommodate and resist those forces. Uh, given, given its location.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the responses.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
No additional questions. That was a useful conversation. Thank you.
No additional questions. That was a useful conversation. Thank you.
And no questions from me. I'm just thinking, Elena, are you able to tell us what the D M F requirements are that, that we would put in the special condition?
Absolutely, yes. So, one of them has already, apologies, I'm just pulling their letter up again. One of them has already been incorporated, so we modified one of the standard pile require, or pile conditions to better reflect what D M F was recommending here. So, they said the D M F recommends that soft, soft starts be implemented for vibratory pile driving at the beginning of the workday. And anytime following cessation of pile driving for a period of thirty minutes or longer, soft starts commence with pile driving at reduced energy for fifteen seconds, followed by a one-minute waiting period, repeated a total of three times before initiating vibratory driving at full rate and energy. They also recommended, oh, and apologies, actually, the second one is the one that we've already incorporated. D M F recommends piles be removed using a vibratory hammer rather than by direct pull or clamshell techniques, lifted through the water column slowly and placed on the barge equipped with a sediment containment basin to minimize pile breakage and reduce sedimentation. And then lastly, they just said that they concur that siltation and debris control measures, apologies if you can hear my dog, be implemented as needed to minimize the release of silt and debris generated during above-water demolition work into Boston Harbor.
Okay. Can I assume that, that those requirements are acceptable to the applicant?
Yeah, none of those seem, seem unrealistic or something that most of the marine contractors that, that would be performing this work are, they're, they're accustomed to, to handling those, yes.
Okay. So in that case, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing, approve the request for an order of conditions with the special condition that the applicant comply with the D M F suggestions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan? Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that passes five to nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment and extension to the original order of conditions for D E P file number zero zero six eighteen seventy-four and Boston file number twenty twenty-two zero three-three from Collins Engineering on behalf of Hangman Productions USA Inc. for the construction of a temporary diving platform supported by, by steel scaffolding on the stone revetment and roof of the Institute of Contemporary Art twenty-five shore, harbor shore drive in South Boston. The resource areas are land subject coastal storm flowage, land under the ocean, coastal bank, waterfront area, and a hundred-foot buffer to the bank. And although I read that as one item, we need to take them in order, there are actually two different requests. So we'll start with the request for an amendment to the original order of conditions. And who's here for the applicant?
Hi, my name is Danielle Goodrow. I'm with Collins Engineers Inc., here representing Hangman Productions.
Okay. Go right ahead.
All right. So I copied and pasted a lot of this from our twenty-twenty-two application, so I don't think we necessarily need to go over absolutely everything, but I'll just do a brief overview of the project. I'm sure everyone is familiar with where the I C A is located. Hopefully, some of you guys have actually gone and seen the Red Bull Cliff Dive. First started in twenty-twenty-two, then we also did it in twenty-three and twenty-four. If you could go to the next slide, please. We include this on all of our applications, just saying, you know, we, we looked at sea level rise, we're familiar with the Coastal Resilient Solutions for South Boston as a temporary structure. It, it wasn't something that needed to be considered for, for this project. If you could go to the next slide, please. Just some photos of the site. You can see on the right-hand side, that's from twenty-twenty-four. I think someone is actually diving in that photo, which is pretty cool. On the left-hand side, you just have an aerial of the site, but really all it is, is the, the dive platform is partially supported on the building itself and then also partially supported on the revetment below, and the divers just go right into Boston Harbor. If you go to the next slide, please. These were some concepts that I think we included in the twenty-twenty-two application. Looks very similar to the photo that I just showed you guys there, but just some more views of what it actually looks like on the building. If you could go to the next slide, please. Just some up-close photos of the building, just so you can see what kind of structures are there now. Obviously, you have the I C A building where the structure is located. You have the revetment below. Various different floats and everything around there, so the divers go in, they get out through the floats. If you don't mind going to the next one. Some more up-close views of the revetment. Other structures there like the gangway, but you can see where the I C A building really is in relation to that revetment there, and then obviously the, the harbor. Next slide, please. So this is the original plan that was included as part of the twenty-twenty-two application. Each year we've done this, there's some, actually, let me backtrack. There's some structural plans that I'll show you in just a second, but this is the day-of plan. So this includes, you know, where the restrooms are, where the A V is going to be, where the T V is going to be. And so this part gets updated every year. It's just minor variations as to where certain things are located. I've sent this to the commission in the past, and, you know, we've done our best to place different receptacles and porta-potties in different locations as best we can, trying to accommodate you guys. But each year we update it. This is the one from twenty-twenty-two, just so you can kind of get a feel for how it kind of, how it looks. If you could go to the next one. These were the original plans that were submitted. These plans do not really change. The, the structure itself is, is staying completely the same, like I had just gone over. It's, it's really only the day-of facilities that could potentially move a little bit. You know, if there's any small changes in traffic, stuff like that. But the, the structure itself that you see right over the I C A building there stays the same. If you go to the next slide, I think I have a cross-section there. Yep, cross-section. Again, it just shows it's partially supported on top of the I C A building there and then also partially supported by the revetment. If you don't mind going to the next slides. These are just more structural details. Probably don't need to go through them in depth, but I have one more slide that has some details, and I think it shows the revetment a little closer there. Yep, there we go. Just another view of the, the revetment and where it actually meets that structure there. So there's two big pipe piles and then some basically scaffolding to help, help support that platform as well. If you don't mind going to the next slide. So for the environmental permitting, I know we have to do it in order, but I'll kind of just give you a brief, brief synopsis. We, the current order of conditions, I thought it was going to expire June second, twenty-twenty-five. I did not realize that everything had gotten extended between a certain date, so the actual end date right now or the expiration of the order conditions is June second, twenty-twenty-seven. We are looking to amend the order of conditions, just to permit it to be constructed once a year as needed. This is something that we had originally done in twenty-twenty-three, the year after, that was with Nick Moreno, through the Conservation Commission. Next year, Elena had come in, and we did that again with Elena through administrative approval process. So just amending the order of conditions so that, you know, we don't have to, for lack of a better term, do a lot of paperwork each year, having to, you know, submit and do this and do that. I thi- I think it's the right process to go through. An amendment. And, you know, we're, we're so willing to provide all of the information that's been updated. It's, again, it's really just that site plan where certain receptacles are located, so we can provide that each year as needed. We're also doing an extension. We were originally going to do the extension because I thought that this was going to expire in twenty-twenty-five. We would still like to put forward an extension at this point, even though the, the order is going to expire in twenty-twenty-seven. Because, just preemptively, this has been a great event in Boston, and while I can't say that it will continue to be in Boston, I would love for it to be, and it would just be easier on, you know, the applicant and coordination-wise if it's something that we could just extend and keep everything the same and not have to go through the process again. It is happening this year, September, I, I believe it's September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five this year. Again, hopefully, it, it will happen in the future. I just, I can't say for sure because it's something that's kind of decided six months in advance, sometime sooner. We do need to get a chapter ninety-one waterways permit for this, and that's something that we're working with Chrissy Hops over at M S T P with. That is all I have. I will open it up to questions. I guess for the amendment, is that the first one?
Yes. Okay. Elena, what do you have for us on this?
Yes, and apologies for not including this in my staff comments. We had a quick question about the trash cans, so we had gone out to just kind of see the site last year when everything had been installed. And the trash cans were just kind of like open barrels that weren't really attached to anything, and they were right next to the water. Obviously, there's, you know, like a railing there, but I am wondering if it would be possible to change the types of trash cans that are used during the event because since it's so highly trafficked and it tends to be pretty windy on the harbor walk, we would just want to avoid like any, any trash being lifted out by seagulls or the wind or things like that. And that could maybe also be a special condition that could be added to the amendment.
So that is something that I will have to check with the applicant. I, I'm unsure who actually owns the trash cans. If it's the I C A building or if it's Hangman Productions that brings them in separately. I feel like it's probably I C A, so if that's the case, I'm not sure if it's necessarily something that they could swap out, but if, if that's, if that's not a possibility, could the special condition, if there is going to be one, center around maybe either that or maintenance in order to make sure that the traffic, the trash receptacles are not overflowing?
Uh, that could also work. I think, yeah, it just, um, last time we were there, it was just a little bit alarming, I think, to see like an open, an open tra- like lightweight trash bin right next to the wall.
Right, right.
So I don't know if we could also have it be a condition that's phrased as, you know, sending us information about the trash bins in advance and kind of discussing what the options are at that point. And then at that time, maybe just seeing if there are other receptacles available, or as you mentioned, if it's just a maintenance question of making sure that the folks staffing the event are, are making sure that they're clear or even just moving them farther from the water.
I, I think that would be reasonable. I just, I don't want to make any concessions without, you know, speaking with the applicant, obviously, but I, I think if it's as simple as, you know, coordination and at least some sort of maintenance during the event, you know, that they have people there helping take care of the event itself. So at the very least, I know something like that could be done, but I, I don't see an issue with including something in the special conditions about coordination efforts before, for, for things like that.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. We would just, yeah, want to see them anchored in some capacity, even if it's just like modifying the existing trash can or something along those lines.
Right, okay.
Okay. Before I go to commissioners, as a reminder to members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at C C at boston.gov. And in order to avoid two rounds of questionings and two rounds of reading that paragraph, although we'll take two separate votes, I'll be happy to take comments on both the application and the extension. I, I've no concerns about the application. And I think we can, you know, just have language that the things, you know, the materials you send in need, need to be approved in terms of where things are. I personally am concerned about the extension. I, I feel like basically it, you're asking functionally for a five-year order of conditions, which is not something that D E P approves as far as I know. So I think with two years to go, I, I would not be inclined to do that, but I'm interested to hear what other commissioners think. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I, I'm extremely confused why at this early stage, if it goes to twenty-twenty-seven, why would we even consider it? It just, and maybe in a year or two, a new set of commissioners are on board, and they have other rational reasons to change things for the next three years. So I, I am not in favor of extending it. I have no problem with the application, but it's illogical to me to do it this early.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Commissioner Conan?
I, I share the concern, and I, I was wondering, before you said this and, and Commissioner Sullivan responded the way he did, I was wondering what the consequence would be of such a long extension and what it means to not have the, the considerate eyes and ears of the commissioners cast on the project as regularly as it should be. So I'm also in favor of keeping it as is and then considering an extension in twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Estes, Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
I, I have of, of like mind. Seems like a couple of years on the existing permit makes sense and then come back.
Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, I think I would look, we'll first address the request for an amendment to the order of conditions. And I'd suggest that sorry, I think I've expired, that a proposal to amend the orders with the orders as proposed and with a review of, of, with giving the staff the ability to review the location of, of materials and so forth. Thank you. I'll take one of those as a second. Commissioner Sullivan?
Exactly what are we voting here?
I'm sorry, this is the amendment to the current, which simply, really the change is this allows them to do it each year for the amount of time left on their permit.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Not that I'm not paying attention here.
It's late, it's getting late. Okay. Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan? Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes five to nothing. And on the extension, I would entertain in order to deny the extension of the permit to, for an additional three years beyond the two years still on the permit. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
I to deny.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan? Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
Aye, to deny.
And sorry if I did that all backwards, and I, I vote aye to deny as well. Okay. Thank you. Okay, and we have two continuances. Continued as a notice of intent from D E pile, D E P file number zero zero six nineteen ninety-six and Boston file number twenty twenty-four zero twenty-one from Epsilon Associates on behalf of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. Also continued as a notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty X X and Boston file twenty twenty-five X X from Beta Group on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So now we will begin our regular meeting, and the first item on the agenda is administrative updates. And Elena, what do you have for us?
Yes, so we've uploaded some materials to the dry folder for the commission's review related to additional tree removals and tree plantings under the existing permit for D E P file number zero zero six dash two thousand two and Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash oh twenty-five. I believe that Tom Hughes is here to answer any of the commission's questions and to present the proposed tree work.
Yes, good evening. Tom Hughes on behalf of Sophia Snowplace. I think you guys are more than familiar with the, with the location, with the approval of the Phase One project, the Phase Two project. I didn't have time to put a presentation together, so I'm just going to say my background is my presentation. That, that is the sweet birch, and you can see, as the arborist pointed out to us, the damage to the sweet birch is right in the, in the notch where the two, two parts meet. It's leaning currently into an area towards an area that is well-maintained with elevated beds and, and grassy areas, and the residents frequent there. There are benches, sitting areas, and, and walks. So even without our project, we would need to be taking this tree out, so I just want to make that clear. So we are outside the twenty-five foot. I put the distance in my request. I can't remember what it is, like twenty-eight. We're, we're, we're close to twenty-five, but we're not there. We're within the lawn area on the inside, on the, on the Sophia Snowplace side of the split rail fence that runs along the, the top of slope. that runs along the the top of slope. And um, we're looking to remove this. And uh during the project, we will replace it with three uh Nissasalvedica black gum trees in a similar location with respect to the buffer zone. But we're gonna need to kind of squeeze them in amongst our many plantings that are already proposed there. Um, we're not looking at removing the stump. At best, we would grind it down.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, Eleanor, it I just want to make sure I understand this right. I think you're proposing this as something you would approve administratively, so we don't need to take action. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. I think um the the reason that we wanted to bring it to the commission is that uh, we're in a bit of a tricky spot administratively. Uh, this wouldn't be eligible for an amendment because D E P doesn't allow for additional impacts to resource areas through an amendment. However, there's already an existing permit open for this work. Um, and so I think that as uh our our recommendation to staff is to perhaps um issue this as an administrative approval, but we wanted to run this by the commission because it's more significant work than we would usually uh process as an administrative approval. But um this would all be with the, under the assumption that the tree work and the plantings would all be done in accordance with the existing permit that's already been issued for the for the site.
Okay, uh, I do not have questions about this. Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Linay?
No questions either.
Commissioner Conan?
Has the administrative approval been already given?
It hasn't.
Is is the tree sick?
Uh, yes, there's there's rot. If you see the picture that is, at least I think I'm looking at it. You can see the rot right in the right in the place where the two trunks meet. And uh, and it it extends right into the right into that notch area. It's it's sort of beyond any kind of repair or cabling or anything like that. And then the mass of the tree itself has a pretty heavy lean to it.
So, but the leaning is not an indication of the sickness, right? Or is it?
Right, no, i- it's not, but the leaning is an indication that if it fails at that notch, that the location where it's going to land um is not really gonna vary based on the wind direction. It's gonna it's gonna kind of go right where it's gonna go based on the center of mass of the tree,
I see.
which is towards an area that is regularly populated.
Yeah, that makes sense. So it's a safety-oriented.
It it is, and and it is, and and with all due respect with regard to the amendment, if you guys needed us to go through the amendment process, I do believe I can make an argument that it complies with the D E P policy on amendment, but that does also require a whole bunch of a butter notice and all that, because the D E P resource area is not where this tree is, right? The buffer zone is not a resource area under the protection. It is under your ordinance. And this would be an unforeseen change, project change within the buffer zone. And we believe that with the replacement with three plantings, we're um we're mitigating any potential for adverse harm. But it it's better just not even have to go down that road and have to notify um, you know, in the city, three hundred feet of a butters for the removal of of one tree, and then also whether or not there's even a debate over filing an amendment. I think it it's just cleaner for us to voluntarily replace within the existing order of conditions that you know, with the three trees and take it out for safety.
Understood, Tom. My my line of questioning is only to understand, you know, what should be done in order to avoid such failure before, because the tree is sort of on a edge and sort of on a cliff, right?
Right.
So when you plant the next three trees, in your letter, you're saying they're gonna go in the same location, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to do that properly or consider.
Yeah, so it they'll be going in the same general location, not in the same exact, so so sort of the gen- same general proximity. And what I envision us doing is field locating where we think they should go and uh and inviting Elena out and looking at where we've placed them. Um, you know, and I do want to note, when we did the permitting, I visited the site a number of times. I saw the lean to the tree. I wasn't concerned about the lean to the tree. It was when the arborist looked at that site that there was a concern.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be right in there.
Uh, Commissioner Estes Margiassi?
I have I have no questions. I'm comfortable with this being done administratively.
Okay, I think it sounds like uh all all questions have been answered and and uh that this can go forward as an administrative change.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You bet. Uh, and I think the last thing on our agenda, which I've managed to close, so I hope it is the last thing, um, is acceptance of meeting minutes, but uh we have not had a chance to review them, so in that case, uh, the next thing on our agenda is to adjourn, uh, which we generally do by acclamation, so if you're ready, we're done.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you all. Have a good night.